Two, two, two. Good evening. I would like to call this meeting of the Genesee County Board of Commissioners to order at 5:31 PM. Roll call, clerk.
Commissioner Lloyd.
Present.
Commissioner Winfrey.
Here.
Commissioner Getzinger.
Present.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Shoemaker.
Present.
Commissioner Fuznow.
Here.
Commissioner Wayhel.
Here.
And last but not least, District Nine.
Present.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
All right. Thank you. We have a quorum tonight. At this time, I want to ask the vice chair of our vice chairperson of the Genesee County Board of Commissioners, Commissioner Shawn Shoemaker, to give us our invocation. Followed by our invocation, we'll stand and have the pledge of allegiance.
If you'd all bow your heads, please. Dearly Father, we thank you for bringing us all here safely today. Please be with us, be with this board as we make decisions that affect so many people. Help us as a group to remember that we are all your children, that we all are trying to do what's best for our community. We may have different views about that, but we need to show the respect to each other that you called us to. Lord, we ask you to help us to make just decisions that will better our community. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Before us, we have the approval of our meeting minutes from our February 12th.
I'll move it.
All right. It's been moved and supported to approve our meetings from our meeting on February 12, 2025. Is there any discussion? All right. Seeing no discussion, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right. Motion passes. Now we come to the time to set aside for a public address. At this time, if there's anyone who wishes to address the Board of Commissioners, if you would come to the right wall and state your name and your city township or village for the record, that will be appreciated. All speakers have two minutes tonight. Because of anticipated amount of speakers, we will not be extending time tonight, but we do certainly want to hear from each speaker who desires to address this body. At this time, our first speaker, please.
Which mic?
Either.
Okay.
Thank you.
My name is Ed Taylor, Chief of Staff, Mayor's Office. I reside in the 7th District. I'm just coming before the board tonight just to basically say that the City of Flint, following the process, put in an application for the Genesee County Senior Millage, the senior citizen application. That was done today. And I also want to state that I took a look yesterday at the news because you couldn't help but watch the news, and I did notice that the President, the Commissioner stated or implied that that money would be going to the nonprofit that is currently at Hasselbring, which is fine, but I just want to state that the City of Flint did make application. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Am I, yeah. My name's Carol Kincaid. I live in the 5th Ward, and I'm a senior, and I've availed my services at Hasselbring forever. Well, at least as many years as Ms. Beverly Lee Lewis has been managing. And I wanted to speak to support continuing the millage with the nonprofit. Now, when I heard Mr. Taylor, he's, it sounded like he thought that it was a choice between the two. And when Commissioner Lloyd spoke to us yesterday, he explained that there is millage available for the 501(c)(3) Hasselbring senior, as well as millage available for the physical location of the Hasselbring building. And I think a lot of people do not understand that. There's room for everybody in this city, and I believe that we need to look at community and come together. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Elizabeth Taylor. I've been living in Genesee County, City of Flint, for 81 years. GLEWA today decided that they're going to increase our water, so I was on a Zoom meeting. Yesterday, you all saw what happened at Hasselbring because you all watched. The mayor of the City of Flint called the police on seniors. That is disgusting. That is a shame. Any of you sitting here, I'm asking you not to stand with him because the seniors have their rights to, and they're being violated. And I'm asking you to, I don't care what color you are, I don't care what your gender is, I don't care where you live, be like us. Stand with us. And that's what we need is your support. We don't need anybody dividing us anymore. We really don't. Don't participate in nasty political games. That's what's happening here. You've seen it before, and you'll see it again. You saw Mr. Taylor run out of here like a rabbit. I mean, is he scared of us? And I want to ask the young people in Flint and Genesee County, please come out and stand with the seniors. Don't let these bullies that wear blue uniforms because they've been sent out by whoever to harass us. They don't have to do that. You police officers have a moral responsibility way before your chief, or the mayor, or anybody else. Don't do that to the seniors. And again, I don't care what color you are, I don't care where you live, stand with the seniors at the new Hasselbring Center. It's our tax dollars. That's what we want, and that's what we deserve. Let us move our furniture out. He's violating what the judge said. He said till March, the judge said, she said, till March 3rd. You know, is he going to come to our houses next? I mean, where does it end?
Hello, everyone. I'm Rosemary Marl, and I reside in the City of Flint in the 1st Ward. I'm also a volunteer at Hasselbring. I go up there almost every day to help them. I've known some of them from years and when I was a kid. I was raised to respect your elders, and I don't feel like the elders are being respected. It's wrong. I witnessed what happened yesterday. It was wrong. I had to actually, and others, try and help diffuse the situation. It was a landlord-tenant issue. It's a civil issue. We all know that if you don't move out, you don't do what you're supposed to. The landlord goes back to court, get an injection, to get injection, get them moved out. That hasn't happened. We were doing what we were supposed to. Yesterday, we were in the middle, we were late, we were cold, trying to get the move started, and then we spent all that time out there dealing with that. Today, the same thing happened, and more people came, attorneys came, and everybody else. I almost wanted to cry because it was wrong. I've never seen somebody that when you're trying to do the right thing, there's no appeal in process. We're moving out, and I explained that to the officers. They're moving out. They have a new location. There's no appeal that's been filed. What have they done wrong? Even the officers that responded last night said that that was wrong. They, they came up there, they said, we came up here to do what we were told. We were told to come up here, we see what's taking place, and now we're leaving. And they left, but then they came back today with the city attorney and everybody else. That was wrong. So I'm just asking you guys and thanking you guys for the continued support of Hasselbring Senior Center, and I hope you will pass in our favor because this was wrong, and it hurt me to the bottom of my heart. And I'm former law enforcement for 29 and a half years. I've never seen anything like this. Nowhere in Texas, South Carolina, or Detroit, at the Wayne County Sheriff Department. So I'm hoping that you guys will do the right thing and continue to support, and we just want to thank you.
My name is Gwendolyn Wofford. I'm 73 years old, born and raised right here in Flint, and it's a disgrace how we, the seniors at Hasselbring, has been treated by the powers to be over across the street. And I'd just like to thank you guys for listening to us and lending a hand to help support us. Whatever you can do to help us, we would greatly appreciate it. And I just want to say thank you in advance because I've already asked God to put it on your mind and to just do whatever needs to be done to help us. We're seniors. You know the other places, they have seniors, they respect their seniors. We are a chosen generation. You know, we have wisdom, have things to give, and then it's like we're being stepped on, you know. Somebody got their neck, their foot on my neck, choking the life out of me. I enjoy going to Hasselbring, and I'm not the only one that enjoy going there. And we're just asking that you just keep on supporting us. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Beverly Lewis. I am the I'm the Executive Director of Hasselbring Senior Center. I want to start by saying that I've been doing this job for eight years, and I've truly enjoyed it, and we've grown into a real family. If you look at most of the people behind me, that's support. I love it. I appreciate it. But I also want to say that we have had continued support from Ms. Lynn Razzolowski and her team in senior services. We have had no issues when it comes to us providing what we need to provide for our seniors. My wish is to continue doing that. We've had support from you all, and I appreciate it. And so all I'm going to ask today, I don't want to get up here and talk about what the mayor did, what the administrator, that doesn't matter right here. I just want to say I appreciate you all, and I'm asking for your continued support and asking for you to approve what we need. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Tanya Burns. I'm here in two capacities, probably three because I'm officially a senior. So I'm here for my ward who has serious concerns and is a resident, and for the seat that I hold at City Council. City Council, I know a good portion of us do not support Hasselbring taken from the city. It was taken from the city because underneath emergency management, but we've surpassed that now. What we're asking, and what I'm asking now in my constituents, which is why I'm here, is to ask for your support for an amendment to make sure that we transfer the simple amendment, which will be the address, over to Pearson Row. They followed the court process. We didn't have enough council members who had the will to support or to even show up for the meeting with the seniors. We need to let them move in peace now. Let them move in peace. I want to say thank you to each and every one of you because when you consider this, this is not an issue. I don't want it to be like a back and forth. Your funding, we have not, we put zero funding to Hasselbring. The funding has consistently come from the county. We're asking for that continued support so that there will be no disruption in those services. The city does not have anything budgeted for Hasselbring. We have not received one amendment. So how are we not going to have a disruption in service? Our seniors are valuable. You have a responsibility. I have a responsibility, whether it's at the City Council, at the city, or the county. We have a responsibility to come together for the seniors, and I'm asking for your vote, your continued support, a yes vote, a Y-E-S vote, so that we can continue to serve our seniors. I thank you for your time, and I hope I can thank you for your yes vote. We have a complete group, was it eight, nine? I can't count. So I'm hoping for a full support for this. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Mary Beth Seaward, and I live in Flint Township. I'm here today to talk about D E I, diversity, equity, and inclusion. Recently, I've been unable to attend county commission meetings in person. However, I've been attending online. At the committee meeting on February 5th, Commissioner Dale Wayhill introduced a resolution to acknowledge Black History Month. There were several paragraphs, including one about D E I. Commissioner Shawn Shoemaker took issue with that paragraph and particularly disparaged the Genesee County D E I Commission, of which he had been a member. At the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners on February 12th, Commissioner Wayhill reintroduced the resolution to be voted on at that time. And once again, Commissioner Shoemaker expressed disdain for D E I in general and the Genesee County D E I Commission in particular. I felt that Commissioner Shoemaker greatly misrepresented our county's D E I Commission. He claimed that they don't do anything. I respectfully disagree. They have done and continue to do important work within the county organization and spreading out to the community. I know this because as a resident of Genesee County with a strong interest in D E I, I have attended most of their meetings ever since their inception in 2022. In fact, I've attended many more meetings than Commissioner Shoemaker. So I'm not sure how exactly he knew what they were doing and deciding since he was hardly ever present. So rather than take his word about things, I strongly urge all of you commissioners to attend a D E I meeting and see for yourselves what they do. They meet on the Thursday, Tuesday of each month, and their next meeting will be March 19th at 5:30 here in this auditorium. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Nair Sharif. I'm a Flint resident, and I'm here to support our elders that are in the room today. As someone who initially worked on, like, was an advocate for the senior millage when it was first adopted in 2006 and voted, yes, every single time it has got on the ballot, you know, I recognize that we have to support our elders. You can tell a society, the value of society or how it supports its seniors and its youth. And, you know, what has been happening to the seniors has been a demonstration that this community don't care about them, you know? And when I think about state violence, state violence is more than a police officer shooting a civilian. It also looks like harassment of what happened to at Hasselbring, and it also kind of looked like having all these police here today, you know, because that, you know, is intimidation. And as someone who has been a community organizer here and been fighting for civil rights in a variety of capacity for over 25 years, most of my adult life, you know, like, we have to value our seniors. And it also looks like what you're going to be voting on later on today because that is also a demonstration through policy, through a vote for the public record of how you are valuing our seniors here today. So I'm hoping that you will vote yes to continue those services. And I forgot to mention, I used to, I used to also teach crochet classes at Hasselbring and Brandon because I wanted to share my skills in valuing and showing that the seniors were valued in this community. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sandy Jovan. Odell Jovan, whichever one you want to take. But I was here about three years ago, I believe. And for one thing, the lady that spoke, I think the D E I and the Black History Month, I think you guys all deserve 12 months instead of just one month. We are American citizens, and I said three years ago that we need to come together and figure this out because the establishment and the government is what is trying to divide us and keep us under. And until we come together and fight as Republican, Democrat, liberals, whatever way you want to put it, they're going to keep doing this. And what I saw on the videos of nine police officers, nine police cops come to one scene, that is unheard of, even in Flint. And you're coming for the senior citizens? You came for the kids, you come for the senior citizens, guess who's next? So I'm just going to keep this, as far as, like I said, the D E I is, it should be based on, it shouldn't be based on your age, your color, your skin, or your sex. It should be based on your knowledge of what you can do for the job. And, you know, that's enough said, but as far as the senior citizens go, you need to protect them. You need to protect them. You need to think of your parents and what they would be doing right now. They fought this fight. They fought this fight for the many years to get to where they are right now, and they deserve that center. But they're going to move. Let them move peacefully, and I'll be out there to help you guys move if you want me to, and clean the building or whatever else because this is wrong, and what is wrong is wrong, and right is right.
Go to the little one. Is that cool?
Sure.
Sasha Keller-Burton. Very few topics bring both Republicans and Democrats together on the issue. The protection of our children is one of those topics, and the care for our elderly would be the second. I spoke to the lady who runs the Senior Citizen Center, and she says she serves 600 on average, 600 a month. That's a lot. That means a lot of people show up for those services, and they're important. Now, I'm not sure what's going down at the City of Flint. They're a mess. Historically, they've always been a mess. When I moved here 20 years ago, I used to love listening to their, to their city hall meetings because they were very entertaining. You know, I'm from Indiana, so it was new to me. But here we are, same situation we have, just like with the masking in schools and the forced vaccines. We had, I mean, I remember with the forced vaccines, we had people who were here for, what was it, Flint Lives Matter, you know? They were here fighting with what you consider your unvaccinated radical right extreme MAGA. And because we came together on that issue, it's important for us. And you guys made good decisions around that. You decided not to force people to get vaccinated. You decided to support their choice, which I thought was pretty big of you considering at that time there was a lot of pressure to mandate vaccines. So I ask you to do that again today. Use your common sense. Do what's best for the people because you're stewards of our tax dollars. We elect you to do what's best for us, not what's best for yourself, not what's best for the City of Flint, and not what's best for, you know, your political futures. We ask you to do what's best for us. We're trusting you with our tax dollars. When this many people show up, that means it's important, and you have to hear that. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
My name is Wilbert Papa Jerry. Ed Taylor, goodness. He spoke about a resolution that was sent over here. It was sent over here at 3 o'clock. It's about the money. That's what Ed Taylor and Shelton Neely want. They don't give a damn what Beverly, Hasselbring, nobody in here go with the Senior Citizen Center. What they want is control of that funding that's set aside for that center. Now, I appreciate all y'all. I'm, all y'all looking at me, except, you know, but he looking at me now. When I go before a city council meeting, they looking at their phones, they playing tic-tac-toe, they on the computer, they usually play cards, business. I appreciate y'all for at least listening to us and looking at us like, like, like y'all care. If you don't care, you're making us think that you care. Now, first time I got involved in political movement, ain't none of y'all in here. None of y'all. Some of y'all wasn't even born. Oh, maybe child. 1966, 1966, the people was always paramount. It was about the people. Now, Neely got sent, Ed Taylor up here, the bully, you know, the bully. But Ms. Brown, you call all over town, because I ain't got one of them call, lobbying for little Neely. Little Neely gonna go. He ain't gonna be re-elected. So hopefully, Ms. Brown's influence going.
Hello. How you doing, Congressman? Nice to meet you. I was a former employee at the Hasselbring Senior Center. I've had a chance to work with Beverly Lewis in that department. I had a chance to meet with the seniors there. The seniors are very well-spoken. As a Christian man, our job is to stand on truth and honesty and loyalty. In this community, we have a lot of shootings that have been happening. I had a chance to call Beverly Lewis and tell her that a lot of the property around Hasselbring was damaged. I made three police reports of doing that because young men were damaging the property. Even though that I was terminated for whatever point, reason, that has nothing to do with this meeting here. But I believe that this community and this senior citizen building where Beverly Lewis has put new roofs, she has put a valuable time and given me a chance and opportunity to work for. And if there's a chance, I would work for her again. I was coming here because someone called my phone to tell me to give them information about the Hasselbring rental properties, and I'm not going to do that because that's not what God told me to do. I'm going to listen to what God has ordered me to do because this woman has gave me opportunities when no one else will. And I want to tell her that I love her with all my heart. I have no what's-name, and whatever she needs me to do, I'm there. I wish that you guys would see the harassment that goes around the City of Flint. I have one more statement. My 70-year-old cousin was killed by police officers here in the City of Flint. My seventy-year-old cousin was killed by police officers here in the city of Flint. And I think that all over the world, we have young men that's breaking in our cars and our homes in there. And I leave you as I came. Thank you.
My name is Eddie Madden, and I am a member of the First Ward. First, I want to bring my attention to the audience in respect to who's missing. My council person for the First Ward. I mean, I look, but I, I didn't see him, so I'm, I'm assuming he's not here. To me, that's a travesty, number one. Number two, I do want to show my appreciation for the fact that you all are here and hearing the people discuss with you all what they would like for you all to do. Now, I know everybody in here is a betting person. I don't know who lost on the Super Bowl, and that ain't a big thing, okay? But nobody bets on the three-legged horse. And if I recall, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, the city is oh and two for dealing with Hasselbrink.
There you go.
Okay? Beverly has been there for eight years with no problem. My thing is just right here, bet on the success. Okay? Bet on success. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Beverly Bix Levy. Hasselbrink has been here for a long time. Uh, when me and my sister, my sister retired and she wanted to start dancing, that was the place that she went to every day. We learned how to make T-shirts, we learned how to ballroom dance, line dance, the whole nine yards. Hasselbrink has been here for us. The city of Flint, I don't understand Mayor Neely. Um, I was at a meeting in the Fifth Ward, and I raised my hand to say something. He thought I was gonna say something stupid. So he said to me, "You ain't in this ward, you can't say nothing." And only thing I was gonna ask, that you guys have bought these trashcans, and they're at abandoned buildings. He wouldn't even let me say that. But as a resident, he's still my mayor. But I, I don't trust him. He needs help. And, and for other of them council people needs help. I was elected in November the fifth for the Third Ward City Council. And they chose not to pick me, 'cause Liddell was walking around telling people, "We're not choosing anybody for the Third Ward, so don't vote." How can you be the president and doing these things, and then you want us to support the council when it's bad habits? So they don't want people that speaks the truth, they want somebody to speak a lie. Before I speak a lie, I won't say anything. But Hasselbrink has been here, Beverly have served up there, she have did the things that she needed to do to bring it to a better situation. If they don't like that, that's not her problem, that's their problem.
Hi, my name's John Billy, First Ward resident, and, uh, over a forty-year participant of the Hasselbrink Center. And I would ask that, uh, I guess you guys table the decision, 'cause there, there's like a split, uh, half the seniors are leaving, half the seniors are staying. So with that being said, Hasselbrink is a center that has stood on its own for over the forty years I know, and the seniors that up there wanna stay, don't wanna move. And when we had prior 501s taking over, if you didn't make it, then they would let another provider take over. And I was the first one on the board. And when that board was resolved, they got another one. But what I'm saying is this, uh, how can you, I guess, how y'all gonna take care of both centers first? 'Cause both seniors deserve support from the commissioner and the county. So once that a senior's going, and once that a senior's staying, we both need support. So if Hasselbrink been the oldest and the standing foundation for this, it seem like me, it'd be easier to just get another provider up at Hasselbrink and let things be the way they were, 'cause as they said, and not all complaint-free up there. There had been all kind of stuff, which I addressed to Rico about two, three years ago. I addressed the whole commissioner down here about complaint through Hasselbrink. So it not as easy as it seem. Thank you.
Good evening to all of you. I'm Pastor William Whitaker. I'm seventy-nine years old, I'll be eighty this year. But one thing, there's only one Hasselbrink. George Moran, that the computer instructor, who was highly recommended and worked for the mayor, I mean, for the, uh, the governor. He said, he, he's proven that seniors can learn the computer. They have jobs. Hasselbrink is the center of north, of the North End. Everyone knows it. My mother is ninety, will be ninety-seven on the third. I went up there and I said, "Mom." She said, "I'm not going." But she said one thing, "Go up there and do what you can." I can tell you right now that Hasselbrink has been the center. Thank you, Del Rico, for your being there and your support. Neely, I was on the board before this board, and Neely didn't have a problem with supporting us. He has changed. He has changed all the way around. I've never seen so many devious folks, I won't say crooks, devious folks. I know it's about the money. I mean, when you can build a two-million-dollar house, and then getting rumored out there in the street that you need seven million dollars to live the way you want to. What'd it say, the love of money? There's a root of all evil. I appreciate all of you, but it's nothing like Hasselbrink will not be, will always be in the forefront. And Beverly, she is gifted.
That's right.
She's the one quarterback person, or four. And she's got more backing than you. The reason I got up, because I didn't see any other pastors get up. And there was a time when the ministers would come, and whatever they say, it was done. Now, there's so many of them taking bribes. I'll say that. I'm not, I, I, I'm not like, I don't care. I have to get one account there. If I tell you something wrong, guess what? I get twice the judgment. Not from you, him. I didn't wanna get up, had to.
Hello, my name is Annette McClinton. I'm the computer teacher at Hasselbrink Senior Center. I, I'd like to thank every one of you for at least listening to us, and please help us out. Hasselbrink Senior Center, when I got up there, there was nothing going on. The city had it, and it closed two times. What they did was they locked the door, then Eric Dumas, you know, group, Miss, I can't think her name from the east side, they got together and put, put in a 501-3C. There was no 501-3C before that. You can't, you can't talk to a couple people, because they, they make up their own things, and they always coming up with something. Just like when he asked you yesterday about the computers, those computers were put in in two thousand and three. What do you think some computers from two thousand and three would be right now? And then, yes, and so the division comes when we get people that do the things that they do, and then they run down there and tell him stuff over there. And, you know, they just keep a lot of mess going on. They keep a lot of, they keep a lot of mess going on. But one thing I also know about that one across the street, you can't tell him nothing. It came straight from our family. You can't tell him nothing, nothing. But I want you to know that I appreciate all of y'all. Please, we're, we're trying to get out of there, we're trying to move and do things right and, and decent. She's, that's one thing he couldn't find on her, he couldn't find nothing not decent. She's a decent person. If she was not, I would tear you. She's doing things decent, trying to pack up, and then here come all the police again today.
My name is Richard Jones, and I just wanna say one thing. Wherever the seniors wanna go, y'all fund and should follow them. Thank you. Good evening. See y'all once again. Let's address the elephant in the room. Y'all wondering why it's such a hassle over there at Hasselbrink? I'm getting ready to say it. She did not do what Neely said, because he was running for Congress. Neely didn't want Rivet over there in Hasselbrink. She said, I already put it out there. She brought Rivet, Neely got mad, Neely being vindictive, that, that's how he is. Phil Shokes wouldn't contribute to his campaign when he was running for Congress. Now he's trying to kick Phil Shokes off the Hurley Board, which he has spent twelve years. Dare way here, you know Phil Shokes, and you know him good, and you know he's about his business over there at the Hurley Board. He don't want experience on the Hurley Board because of his own personal needs. Y'all know I came over here before about the cancer study. I came over here because it's a cluster, you know, the other part, over there at the city. Can't nothing get done over there, because you have vindictive mayor, you have vindictive council members, they stupid, ignorant, incompetent, whatever name, negative name you can come up with, that's them. We have been professional over here. I haven't screamed, I haven't cussed, I even caught a cuss word, because it's professional. And I'm enjoying it over here. Attitude reflects leadership. Ms. Brown, the word on the street is that he's been lobbying you. Don't get caught up in his bull crap. Please don't. I like you. I like you a lot, professionally, because people be taking that the wrong way. Please, y'all, let's do the right thing. Let's not make it personal, let's not make it political. Don't let that disease that's over there come over here. Thank you.
My name is A.C. Dumas, and many of you know me, and I know you. I was trying to think what I was gonna say, and the Lord told me what to say. I had people back there tell me, I said, "Listen, I'm gonna say what the Lord said me, told me. You all pray, I heard you pray." And he took me to the scripture, where they talked about, "The Lord, the King asked them, 'When did you see me hungry?'" I'm about to cry. "And didn't feed me. 'When did you see me in prison? You didn't visit me. 'When did you see me outdoors? And you didn't take me in?'" And the King said these words, the King is the Lord. He said, "When you've done it to the least of these, you've done it to me." The word of prick your heart. When you did it to the least of, of seniors. See, I'm a senior. I've been going to Hasselbrink a long time. You heard of Mr. My Name, Dumas. Don't let the Lord, the final judge, that is the final judge, is when you did it to them, you did it to me. I wanna commend Pastor Reed. That same scripture said, "When you took me in, when you fed me..." Said, "Lord, we didn't know that." Said, "I'm gonna commend you, because you did it to the least of them, you did it to me." See, it's gonna be a reckoning day, one day. It's gonna be the goats on the left and the sheep on the right. God help me to be a sheep. Thank you.
My name is, uh, Bertie Foster. See, I got my notes. I don't generally speak, uh, sometimes singing the choir, so I'm not gonna sing today. I've been knowing Ms. Beverly Lewis for many years. I haven't had any problem with her. She keep, she keeps us informed what is going on in different program at Hasselbrink. While we, while we are at the center, she makes sure that we are fine. She is a person that cares for her seniors. To like, today, I would like to thank her for her good work, what she have done, and the work that she is about to do in advance. Sometime I take out my, I don't get chance to come all the time at Hasselbrink, because I babysit. I'm a senior, but I do come up there, enjoy everything that, all the programs that, that she have. I love you, Ms. Beverly.
I love you.
Keep up the good work.
Are there, are there any additional speakers who wish to address this body?
Good evening. My name is Allison Montgomery-Littlejohn. I am a social worker in the Flint and Genesee County community, and I am here to show my support for Hasselbrink Senior Center and the seniors in our community. I am encouraging the commissioners to be ethical and to stand on righteousness, and show your unconditional support for our seniors. I'm also here to remind you that a community that does not support their elders is a community that is spiritually dead and lacks respect, dignity, and integrity. Please be the opposite of a deviant, what we see across the street. This community is dying, and as far as I'm concerned, this act of evicting our seniors, um, our forefathers and foremothers is an act of, uh, being a deviant, being evil, and being a devil. Be the opposite of that. Stand on righteousness. Thank you.
Are there, are there any additional speakers who wish to address this body? Any additional speakers who wish to address this body? If there are no additional speakers who wish to address this body, our public comment period is now closed. Please, um, take a look at the screen for a video. Please take a look at the screen for a video. Before we transition, and I would like a motion to entertain actually three add-on resolutions. We have for a number of issues, matters that we want to add to the agenda. I just want to take just a moment just to address what so many have spoke about tonight. It's no secret that there has been ongoing discussion, dispute, negotiations between the city and a vendor of Hasselbring Nonprofit Corporation. And not much has been said from the county or even myself from this seat because the landlord-tenant dispute and discussions was not one that fell under the jurisdiction of the county commission. And what I mean very specifically is that Genesee County has not ever been a party to the lease agreement for the property Hasselbring Center that's owned by the city of Flint. However, once dispute began to take place, I did raise that in a meeting here with our board for awareness, and it's a matter that I paid close attention to. A lot of conversations with Ms. Lewis and Hasselbring, conversations with Mayor Neely, Mr. Taylor, and other stakeholders in the community behind the scenes because I was sensitive to the fact that it was in fact a city matter, given that the property is owned by the center. But I always have been consistent with my eye on the fact that the vendor, Hasselbring Nonprofit Corporation, is in fact a vendor of Genesee County. And so whatever happened to the vendor in that property dispute, if you will, negotiations, at some point, it would be something that we would need to address because this is our vendor for the last eight years. And so once the judge ordered the eviction of the nonprofit corporation on last Thursday, then it became my responsibility as the elected county representative for the district in which that center sits. It became my responsibility then to engage with the stakeholders once again. And so I reached out to Beverly Lewis, who had been evicted by the judge, the nonprofit. I talked to her and I asked her on behalf of all seniors if she had a plan to continue to deliver services. And during that call, she indicated that she did. She had a location in mind. I then mentioned to her that I felt it was my responsibility not just to take her word for it, but to have a discussion with her board of directors. And so she was evicted on Thursday. Friday morning, I met with her Friday night. I had a meeting with her board of directors. And actually, we didn't even meet in this building because it was closed. I invited them to the church I attend for meet, and we sat down and we met for a couple of hours. After I concluded my discussions with the board, who was in support of our vendor of the last eight-plus years, then I said to the board, "It's not enough for me just to talk to the executive director. It's not enough for me to talk to the board of directors. I need to hear and speak with the seniors directly because it's the seniors who I'm elected to represent." And so you just saw a video clip of the meeting that I then had on Tuesday, yesterday afternoon. And it was an awesome meeting. Jared did a phenomenal job, our communications director. He sent, without me even asking, a request through a database that he had for about 3,000 seniors in my district. He sent it to them, a request, an invite to this meeting. He not only put together a social media post that went out all across the community. By show of hands, how many of you saw that social media meeting invite? So it went all across the community. And then he also sent out press releases because it was important to me to make sure both those who were in support and those who were not in support of Beverly Lewis, that everybody had an equal opportunity to attend the meeting. And so we had the meeting. I want to thank our pal, um, 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 Pal Coleman of G Card. If you'll stand up. She was there with her team. They had an information table, and she spoke to the group about the services that we provide at Genesee County. Lynn, if you would stand, our director of senior services. She was on site to talk to the seniors and inform them about the senior mileage and what the funds were used for. I think there are representatives in here from Veterans Affairs, Veterans Services, who was here. If you'll stand up, the director. He also sent representatives from his department. They had tables, they spoke, they provided information. Once they, thank you so much. Once they provided information, I opened the meeting in this fashion. I am elected to represent the county, to represent this district. As county commissioner, I am not here to beat up the mayor. I am not here to beat up the city council. I am not here to rehash and to discuss what happened in court. By show of hands, how many of you heard me say that five times? I said, "I am here because I want to hear from the seniors. Yes, no, maybe, do you support her, or do you don't? So that I understand what the will of the seniors of the community is." Is that what happened? So this wasn't a political matter. It was my responsibility to my residents to understand their will. And fast forward, we then passed the mic throughout the seniors and, and folks, you know, individuals. I'm for it, I'm for it. We love Beverly Lewis, a lot of what you heard. And there were so many that a young lady, you know who you are. She stood up in the meeting and said, "You spoke tonight." And said, "Okay, we had enough of this. Everybody who's in support of Beverly Lewis, wave your hand. You did it." And the whole room waved their hand. And I circled behind her and I asked a question as I conclude. Is there anybody in the room who does not support what is happening? Because I too want to hear from you. And of course, we did receive one question about what happens with computers and equipment. And even on that, our director got up and addressed it and said, "Anything that was purchased by the nonprofit over $250," Lynn, you said that, "that it goes with the center and everything else stays." And so at the end of the meeting, the lovely voice, the awesome voice you heard on that recording was our very own Jerome Thrillkill. He sang a song. I said a prayer, and I concluded the meeting by saying that I will bring a add-on resolution to do as my constituents, my constituents, have suggested and agreed that they desire for me to do on their behalf. Afterwards, I began my own outreach to this body so that you understood my intentions to bring an add-on resolution. We had no debate via text, none of that kind of stuff. But I wanted to give you the respect that it was coming. At this time, I want to bring Lynn from Senior Services because one of the things that I've reached out to her and asked her about, I asked her about Mrs. Lewis, and I wanted to know what has been her history from the senior services perspective, because I'm not privy to it. I don't know what that has been. I know I hadn't heard anything, but I wanted her to share. So if you would, and thank you for being here tonight. Will you share with my colleagues what you shared with the public unprovoked yesterday about your experience with this particular vendor?
Good evening, commissioners. Through the chair to all of you. I have had the privilege to work with Beverly since she and the nonprofit took, um, running the center since July of 2016. I can honestly say I have seen a complete 180 in that center. She has done a magnificent job of incorporating programs, services to serve the seniors. I'm not going to speak on a motion. I'm going to tell you some numbers that, that prove it. When I started working here in 2011 through 2015, when it was run by the city, Hasselbring averaged 383 seniors a year. Since July of 2016 till now, Beverly and her nonprofit board have averaged 680 seniors per year. Even during the height of COVID, she had 499 unduplicated seniors. And that was when seniors did not want to come out of their home. I am proud to state, as of today, and we're not even halfway through the fiscal year, they have 845 unduplicated members. Even today, a normal business day, there wasn't a dance, there wasn't a special program. There was just day-to-day operations. She had 60 seniors in there today. Just, just today. She's very easy to work with, with our office. During the reimbursement requests, if something is accidentally missed or oversight, she's not defensive. She's very open to give us the information we need. Anytime we come in for an audit or a walkthrough or invited to a program, it's very warm, it's very inviting. We know Beverly and that nonprofit is doing a great job because we know by the 845 seniors that are there. There have been no dings on any audits, both financially and contractually. So I have no doubt that Beverly and the nonprofit will lead the Hasselbring Senior Center 2.0 at the, at the, at the new location. I, I fully support them, and of course, as always, my team will be there to help you and guide you along the way.
Thank, thank you. In conclusion, I want to say that, you know, the location, I went over and walked through the location. I'm familiar with it. My mother's wedding reception was there probably 12, maybe 14 years ago. Very familiar with the location. And the location isn't Hasselbring. It isn't, it isn't the same center. It's not as newly renovated as that center. But it's, it's, it's a good place, and it's a, and it's a start. They're being evicted as of this past Thursday. They have to be out by March 3rd. And it's going to be some transition time, but I have confidence as county commissioner that they'll be able to make the transition. And then I just want to say this, that what I desire as commissioner in the district, and I said this to the group, is that one day the seniors will be able to come back together in one place. It, it hurts my heart, it breaks my heart, and I'm not going to tear up. I'm, I'm not going to do that in here. But, but it's unfortunate what is happening. But as I said to the group, as being as balanced as I possibly could be, I was very balanced in approach, that of course, the city can make application at a later time than they have. And that's something, you know, that I'll consider because it's in my district. It's in my district, my elected district. And that's something, you know, when I'm comfortable, I see a plan that I'll consider, you know, considering when that time comes. But right now, my focus is to make sure that this, these seniors continue to go forward. I'll close with this. I've received a call today from a senior that supports the mayor's plan for Hasselbring or support staying, because I want to present someone who was on the opposite side of this. And they said to me, "Del Rico, as commissioner, I want to remind you, you have a responsibility to all the seniors," which I talked about that yesterday. She said, "I acknowledge it. I watched the meeting, I just couldn't attend." And she asked me, she says, you know, "What can you do to bring the centers, to, to stop this from happening and bring the seniors back together?" And what I responded to her by saying is, again, we don't manage that facility. We did not at Genesee County create the dynamics. We didn't make the decision for the eviction. We did not divide the seniors. What I'm seeking to do is support these seniors and, and to also do whatever I can to encourage across the street to do the right thing, in my opinion, to bring everybody back together. So that's where I am. So with that said, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask for, because we need to go to discussion. I'm gonna ask that-
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to move to add the three add-ons to the agenda.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to do too, before we go any further.
Yes, yes.
I know that's what you want to do.
Yes, thank you. So we have three add-on resolutions. One, add-on number one will be the resolution that is the assignment of fund balance for general fund. That will be add-on number one. Add-on number two will be the item that you have, which is the approval of a travel request by the Genesee County Human Resources Department to travel to the Prito captive annual meeting in Colorado Springs. So that will be add-on number two. And then add-on number three will be the resolution that will, and I'll read it because it's only one paragraph for the record, be resolved by this board of commissioners of Genesee County, Michigan, that the request by the director of the Office of Senior Services to authorize amending the fiscal year 2024, 2025 Senior Center contract between Genesee County and the Hasselbring Senior Center, said amendment being necessary to change the address, location only, with all remaining terms remaining unchanged and in full effect. That will be add-on number three. So it's been moved and supported to add all of these items to the agenda. Is there any discussion on either of these resolutions? Let's take them in order. Add-on number one, is there any discussions about add-on number one? Can we do that? Oh, this will just be the, the motion to add it to the agenda. Commissioner Cusano?
In respect to the audience, I'd like to do number three first.
Okay.
And do these three before we do appointments. I mean, that's, I know, I know that's why they're here.
Sure.
And so I think we should address that issue.
So the chair will honor that. If there be no objection, we will just address add-on number three at this time. Is there any other discussion, and that's about the change of address? Is there any discussion about adding this to our agenda? That's the first vote. No discussion, sign no-
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Point of order that all have been moved, all items have been moved. Let's approve it, then let's, all three, so we don't have to change the motion. Then let's just work on, agree to work on number three first.
Thank, thank you for that point of order. So the, the current motion is to add all three add-ons to the agenda. Sign no additional discussion. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. It is so ordered. Now we have before us add-on number three. What is your pleasure?
Chairman, I move add-on number three.
Support.
All right, it's been moved by Commissioner Charles Winfrey. It's been supported by Commissioner Wayhill. Is there Commissioner?
Cusano.
Cusano. It's been supported by Commissioner Cusano. Okay, is there any discussion on add-on number three? Commissioner Flueeling?
Sir, Mr. Chair, through you to Lynn. She still here? Yes. A couple of questions for you as in regards to this. So Hasselbring Senior has an existing contract with the county, yes?
Through the chair to you, yes.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Chair. In good standing?
Correct.
Okay. Do you have any reason to believe that the programs and services won't be maintained at the same level at the new location?
Absolutely not.
I see no reason not to support it then. Thank you.
Commissioner Cusano and then Commissioner Wayhill.
Yeah, through you to Lynn. And you've examined the new facilities or the building, and it will meet the needs of what the seniors require?
I have not toured the building yet. I have driven by and I know where it's located. It is up to the nonprofit board to approve where they feel they want to hold their senior services. We don't have, the county does not have any requirement of square footage, private rooms. We would come through afterwards just for a tour. And if there were any concerns, then we would, we would make note of that. But that is the, that's the responsibility of the board.
Okay, so you, you haven't been there, but you will once they're up and running and make sure everything is-
Hundred percent. We will be there to support.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Wayhill?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to our Director of Senior Services. Have an interesting, or have an interest in what Mr. Taylor said earlier before he departed, that they had submitted a proposal or an application to become a senior center, the city of Flint. Is that true?
Through the chair to you, yes. At 4:30, we received one proposal, and a little before 5:00, we received a second proposal.
Okay. Okay, so through, through the chair to you. Assuming that, so, so does that follow a proper process in terms of any entity wanting to start a senior center?
This is the way they start, by filling out the application.
Okay, so that part is in order, although somewhat irregular, given there might be two proposals that are worded differently?
I have not had the chance to thoroughly review. I've thumbed through them.
Okay, that's fair. Through the chair to you, again, on this topic. In your experience, how long would it take for a new applicant, like the city of Flint in this case, to, to actually go through what they need to go through in order to begin services if they were ultimately approved?
Through the chair to you, Commissioner. First, after reviewing, my staff and I would review. We would do pros and cons. I would come to the commissioners of the Human Services Committee or whoever the chair would like me to go through, and go through as I would with, with any other, other center. I would make a recommendation based on that. We would have wonderful discussion, and we would look with- have wonderful discussion, and we would look with the fi, you know, the financial piece, because it, it costs money to run every center, it costs at least $137,000. And then we would go from there, and ultimately, the board would make the decision on funding.
So, so give me a sense of weeks, months?
Based on, on my part, I would have, you know, I could have information by the end of the week, my recommendation, but again, depending on board schedules and, and doing that, and how much discussion that this body would like to have.
Well, then the practical matter of the new entity starting up business, right? Moving in and hiring staff and all of that, which I know you don't control, but that's certainly another element. I guess what I'm getting at is, we have, we want, we want to have business continuity for the seniors. And, you know, I'm going to be supporting this motion with a yes vote, in part because I don't think we can risk ending services for the people who are depending on them. And, you know, and it, it's an address change, and the nonprofit agency, according to what I'm hearing from the senior services director, is performing not only adequately, but admirably, it sounds like. And I'll just end, you know, I was on the Flint City Council at one time, and I know how important the senior centers are all across the county, but particularly in the city of Flint for people, so they can get together and, and do the things that were described by some of our speakers. The Brennan Center was in my council ward when I was on city council, and had some great relationships with the people there, Barbara Griffith Wilson and Debra Holmes, who's there now, and, and the members. So I'm happy to support this and happy to support a nonprofit that's doing good work for our senior citizens.
I know the answer to this, but through you to our corporate counsel, because I want to publicly hear his answer. You've reviewed these documents and you're okay with this, this resolution?
Yes.
Thank you.
Dr. Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And through you, Mr. Chair, to Lynn, thanks for remaining here, because I'm a data person, and you know me well. I always look for data, so I really appreciate hearing the numbers of how they've gone from 383 to 845. That is a phenomenal improvement. And one of the things that I always look for is researching the data, doing qualitative analysis and doing quantitative analysis. And in hearing, I've talked to colleagues, I've talked to our chairperson about this issue, and I know many of the people that participate at, in Hasselbring. And the seniors at Hasselbring deserve the same level of services of any other district, any other senior center in this county. And so I also will be voting yes for this because they deserve uninterrupted, high-quality services. Thank you.
Is there any additional discussion, Commissioner Shoemaker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, just several questions I've jotted down here and received several phone calls today over this issue and trying to clarify everything, you know, you know, normally anything comes from the floor right off the bat. Makes me wonder, I didn't realize the deadline was so close for this poor senior center. You know, that's, that's horrible. I'm trying to understand first, and you can answer it, or Lynn can answer it, or whoever. So I'm understanding, the lease was offered to the senior center or not, from the city of Flint?
What I, what, if, if it's okay with you, there's a member of the city council here that can speak better to it than I. Is, is that okay? Will you come answer the question regarding the city's, the city's action on the lease?
I'm going to go to the short mic. To you, to you, Chair, to Commissioner Lloyd, to Commissioner Shoemaker, what is your question, sir?
My question is, was a lease presented to the senior center?
Yes. There was an agreement for a lease. The lease was not like any other lease. They were asked to pay $3,586.67. Four, I'm sorry, $4,586.67. All of our other facilities pay $1. Some of the facilities, say in my ward, Mock Park Clubhouse, they pay $1 for 10 years. They don't pay water, they don't pay consumers' energy. So what I was concerned with, because I know the level of the individuals who serve, who the nonprofit serves, could they afford that? And in addition to that, as Commissioner Lloyd mentioned, I believe, the year of the building, when his mother had her reception there, it's original. And so they were concerned with having three furnaces. That would be $2,500 per, per furnace, if they were all to break down. And generally, we know when something breaks down, they break down. So if they had a found, an issue with the roof, the, the three furnaces, every incident would be $2,500. They did ask to go back to the table. Council agreed unanimously to have the, the contract to go back, to negotiate some of those issues, because they're a nonprofit. We give zero funds to fund their programming. It comes 100% from the county and from grants that they apply for. And it was just not feasible how they started the lease out. Now, they didn't negotiate it down. I've never seen a lease with $2,000 per month with a $1,500 credit. I don't know how you write that off, and I've taken accounting. So I just want to say, the lease was not like any other lease, and it looked as if it was a form of retaliation. And I know four of us stressed our concerns.
Was I being tried to bring it up?
And, and, and Commissioner Shoemaker, we did, Councilwoman Jerry Riffey-Carter, our senior councilwoman, did try to, we held a special meeting, she called the meeting, I signed on with her. Four of my colleagues chose not to show, so that we could go over these issues as not to have a disruption in services, knowing that those seniors, that's the only socialization, and it's the only meal some of them get per day.
Thank you. If I may continue.
Yes.
Um, is she leaving us?
Councilwoman Barnes.
Oh, you're giving me great information, we're not going to stop them.
I know. I don't have my tennis shoes on, but yeah.
Well, you just stay, stay here, if it's okay, Mr. Chair. What is the rationale, because it was a dollar a year, if I understand? Was there any discussion with the board, the city council, I'm sorry, as far as why such an increase was needed? Because I'm trying to understand, these are seniors, and the difference of a few thousand dollars to the city of Flint compared to helping seniors is minuscule, so I'm trying to understand why we're here.
Well, I, it was, it was politically motivated, and it's no secret, unfortunately, and I'm very saddened, that our council is split. We are split to where we are divided to where we're not working cohesively as a council, as we should. We are the legislative branch, but we have council members who work with our executive branch. I know what the price is in the leases, and I'm scared this is going to happen to Brennan, because they've been around a lease also. Our senior centers should not be used for retaliatory reasons, nor should they be used for political reasons. Our seniors vote, they support, they have a loyal base. It was purely retaliatory.
Who presented them? Was it the mayor's office or the city council that presented them with the lease?
And well, here's, we have some, I hate to say goofy rules. So the lease had been negotiated with the nonprofit, with the mayor's office in this process. The city attorney, stated, it depends on which city attorney you get now, that we don't have the right to amend. Literally had to go way back to 30 years ago to get some answers for some people. They worked with the, to get the contract together, they sent it, they sent it forward. One of the questions, I am very vocal, is that it was a dollar, why are we paying more? My ward was going to get a dollar for 50 years. So, and my ward is much more diverse. It came back to, it, it came back to us, and we were concerned. I mean, all of us. The first were councilmen, he is the one who tabled it, but he has recanted that, instead he didn't. But the record shows in the transcripts and the videos, he, he did. So for me, and for what we were stating, they deserve a fair chance. We're not here to put a burden on the, the burdens of our seniors. They've done their work, we're there to support them. I'm a senior now, I want to be supported, so.
Well, thank you. If I, if I can keep questioning. Thank you for your question. I've got more, I've got more for other people, though, I just want to clarify some stuff.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Am I good?
Thank you. Thank you so much. My next question is, and I don't know who can answer it. One, I'm concerned, because obviously, this is a real problem for some seniors. They like their routines, they like their schedule, they like going to the same place they're comfortable with and doing things over and over again. And I can't believe that this couldn't get worked on and resolved by the, by the city. But that being said, does anybody know how most of the seniors get to the center? Is there, is it a bus route, or is there anything else like that, so we can make sure MTA is dropping residents off?
Will you come to the mic, Ms. Lewis?
I have a big mouth.
I've been raised right, I want to agree.
Also, we pay.
Oh, God bless you.
Yes. We have approximately five to six seniors who come to the center daily on MTA U.R.I. We have a few, less than six, I would say, that walk. But generally, just one that walks all the time, because she doesn't have transportation. The others walk because they choose to get that exercise before they get there. Everyone else either drives, or they're dropped off by a family member.
Do you feel that what has happened is going to affect your visitor count, then?
No, sir.
Okay.
If I may?
Yes, please.
As I said when I was up here earlier, we're mostly like family. We only have a few people who have issues with things that go on at the center. And in all honesty, the few people who have had issues, have been people who have refused to follow our policies, like scanning in, which gets us our money, right? Using the back door to try, to try to enter, which is unsafe. We don't know you're here if you don't come through the front, you know? And so we've asked them to follow the rules, and when they have refused to follow the rules, then we've asked them to leave until they can come back and follow the rules. And when they refuse to leave, then we have to call the police and say, we need an escort out of the building. So now you're mad at me because I made you follow the rule, or I called the police on you because you didn't follow the rule. And I can count four in the eight years that I've been there, and it has not been one a year, okay? So, I mean, one every other year. But, you know, it's, my seniors all are saying, we're going with you, with the exception of one that's in this room. It's what they're saying to me. I can't say what they're saying to anyone else.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much. I, I don't think, I got one other question, and it's not for them, but do, do we have a representative from the city of Flint here that could, could speak to what their plan was when people need to get their bills? If they were going to take it over and they don't have staff?
They don't care about food, they care about money.
All right. Thank you. Have you concluded your questions, Commissioner? Do you have additional?
I just am very concerned when we move forward with this new center with the city of Flint, if that's, if they've applied and they've applied correctly. One, obviously staffing, it would be a concern for me, how, what their plan is. And two, they had all kinds of problems before, so I know that's not worth addressing here, but that's something for everyone to think about as we move forward when we review their paperwork. So, just, just so, just so you know.
And as I, as I go to, as I go to Commissioner Win, Commissioner Cuzano, as we wrap this portion of the discussion, and I'm asking my colleagues, you know, that the center resides in the district that I represent, that I'm elected to. And it's my responsibility, and I, and I've done that with civility, honor, and with the highest level of professionalism, as I expressed earlier, engaging with the mayor, the seniors, looking for all perspectives. And it's my responsibility to navigate the dynamics of my district, and I'm just asking the board, that as it relates to the city's request, that you allow me to navigate that with city hall, with our senior services department, and, and to bring back a recommendation that I'm open to, when I'm comfortable with doing so. Because again, even after this meeting tonight, and if this passes, there are still dynamics that I'm going to be faced with in my district that I'm elected to, and with the constituents that I'm singularly elected to serve as their county commissioner. So I'm just asking for that respect. Commissioner Cuzano?
Yeah, I, through you to, I don't know who right now, but probably Lynn. Is anybody from planning here? Derek Bradshaw, is he out there? I have some questions about, recently, we allocated $100,000 to every senior citizen center, and I just need some clarification. I know each one was different, and I just want to know how this will affect anything that we've done with that $100,000 and the planning for this center.
Sure, that's a good question. We currently have two signed contracts for the senior centers with the city of Flint. And, and as far as if there's any changes or those things, you know, that's something that this board, you know, will have to take a look at. But right now, we have two signed contracts with those.
With this particular center?
With the property, so the address and the property for the location that they're moving out of, we have a signed contract for that.
To do what?
For $100,000 to do some, I think it was a, a pole barn or garage and a few other-
So we're, we're, we're putting that money into that center that we are going to vote to vacate and let this foundation go to another building. So the city of Flint then will have that property upgraded, and we don't know what's going to happen.
Yeah. So we have not, so, so based off the information that happens today, we have not spent any money on these contracts.
We've not spent anything.
Correct.
Okay, if things don't go well, now I'm assuming this is going to pass, you know, I'm a vote yes for it. But how do we handle that as far as where that money goes? Can we then take and turn around, be and say, was the, was it not the foundation that applied for that money, or the city of Flint?
The, the two contracts are with the city of Flint. So the question about that question, I think is a valid question, and I think that's something that we want to take a look at and see what this board wants to do with that issue. But right now, we currently have two-
So we have a lot of different options that we can do.
We have two signed contracts, and there's been no money expended. There's no projects that are out for bid right now with those projects.
Okay, well, that'd be a separate issue that we'll have to take up.
That will be an additional issue.
You know, and, and I'll have a lot of questions for corporate counsel and you. But yeah, I'm fine, thank you.
I think Brian should address that, though.
Is there any additional discussion?
No.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Wayhill.
Just to follow up on what the line of questioning-
Excuse me, one second. Really, really appreciate everybody's thoughts and your patience with us today. Now that we concluded, public comment, if you'd just give us a moment to discuss this, it's very, very important for us to be able to take action. Thank you so much. Commissioner Wayhill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to follow up on the great line of questioning that Commissioner Cuzano started with Derek, and turned to our corporation counsel. So it sounds like we have two signed contracts, legal documents, between the county and the city, the property owner for the additional $100,000 that we gave to every senior center. Some senior centers are owned by the municipality, I think that's true in Flushing, for example, which I represent. But there's a, we, we have an entity that's running the programming. So in my view, assuming we vote to adopt the, the address change, that means, in my view, that the money needs to follow to the address. But given, given that we have apparently two contracts, I'm wondering, I'm sure that's easier said than done, but I'd like you to weigh in, because it is a legal matter.
Well, first of all, I would have to read the contracts. I don't know if I have seen them or approved them. But the language of the contract would control.
So you don't, you haven't read the contracts before this evening?
I review dozens, if not hundreds, of contracts. I don't remember reviewing these contracts.
Okay.
Derek might be able to, if, if they've gone through the legislative process.
I'm going to have our Director of Administration, Josh Freeman, speak to it.
Commissioner, we'll review the contract in the morning and have an answer to you by end of day tomorrow. As I recall, those were for capital projects on a- As I recall, those were for capital projects on buildings, so we'll have to review and see where we're at with that, depending on the outcome of this vote, but we can have a written answer for you tomorrow.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
All right, Commissioner Dr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My understanding with... Because I think this is some ARPA money that the senior centers have gotten. So number one, the money, at least in my townships that have gotten the money and they've used the money, it's on a reimbursement basis, so they have to spend it upfront first and then they get reimbursed. But before all of that happens, there has to be some sort of environmental review with... That has to pass the muster before they begin doing any work on the building. So assuming the contract has been executed and the environmental review has been, you know, rubber stamped or whatever, we may need to start from scratch if we are changing the address to a different building, because the new building, we don't know the condition of that new building. So we really have to do our due diligence with that first.
So thank you, Commissioner Shoemaker.
Just last item, and this has nothing to do with what we're going to do here tonight, but as far as we're talking to $100,000 grants we gave out, if these are signed contracts, you've got a business that you've made an agreement with, though, okay? You've completed an agreement with. So I don't know if you're going to get out of things as easily as you... We think we are. Because if I have a business and you signed an agreement with me, you're supposed to honor that. So I think we need to look into this further. I don't think it should stop us from moving this resolution forward and getting this done tonight, but I think there's going to be a lot more conversation with this. But I want everybody to think of that. You can't just, you know, tell a business, "Guess what?" They may have bought equipment, they may have bought supplies or anything else like that, and then we're on the hook for that. So just be prepared, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Fuehle.
One last follow-up through you to either Mr. Freeman or the Senior Services Director. She's still here. Okay, perfect. Just to further clarify all this discussion tonight, this contract between the county and Hasselbring Senior Center, the only change they're making tonight is the address, correct?
Through the chair to you, yes, address only.
Address only, there's no enhancements?
No.
No money being taken away, so this is approved. They can continue to provide services to these seniors ongoing, regardless... There's been a lot of talk, but regardless what the city of Flint does, applications are fine. We don't have a plan, we haven't seen anything. But right now, today, we're going to change the address so they can keep operating.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing no additional discussion, we have before us add-on number three, the resolution to make the amendment to the contract with Hasselbring Senior Center nonprofit corporation. Seeing no additional discussion, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes eight to zero, thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your engagement and attendance tonight. I assume that there are many who may decide to exit at this time. I want to give you just a couple moments to do that as we have additional business that we need to conduct tonight. So if you would transition at this time so that we're able to proceed without interruption. Good luck to you, thank you all so much. If you would depart the room at this time, we'll proceed with the remainder of our agenda. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good luck to you. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, we're going to take a three-minute recess, and we'll reconvene in a few minutes. We'll reconvene at 7:07.
Don't wait for dinner.
At this time, I'd like to call the Genesee County Board of Commissioners meeting back to order. If we can take our seats, we'll move forward with the remainder of our... The remainder or remaining portions of our agenda. Before us at this time, I'd like to move to add-on number one, which is a resolution, assignment of fund balance for general fund. What is your pleasure?
Move it.
All right. Yeah, this would be for approval. This will be for approval. Okay, it's been moved. There was... The motion was made by Commissioner Fuehle, I believe it was supported by Commissioner Winfrey. Is there any discussion on this item? Commissioner Wayhill?
Mr. Chair, I just want to confirm with the Finance Committee chairperson, to whom the memo was addressed from the Chief Financial Officer, Crystal Simpson, that he's in agreement with this.
Yes, I am.
That's all I got, thank you.
All right, is there any additional discussion? Commissioner Dr. Brown?
I would just like... Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just like to say that this is an important first step towards getting to our overall long-term strategy of increasing broadband across the county, so...
Excellent. Commissioner Shoemaker, my apologies, I skipped over you.
No, it's okay, I don't mind. My question is, where or how did we come up with these two options? What committee did it go through to determine these? Or did it go through Finance? Marty, was it through your committee?
Yeah, that went through my committee, yeah. I sat down along with Commissioner Getzinger, okay? And the Finance Department. I think Josh was probably there, too. That was what we decided at that point in time, the options to do. So it's now for the board to review and do what they want.
Got you.
And if... Can I just add on to it that this isn't approving the projects? This is just assigning the dollars there and kind of putting this placeholder in that as we move forward, these things have been discussed by the board and been a priority of the board. So we're going to put a pin in this dollar amount, assign it there, and then we'll have to go out and make the case to you to make the actual approval of the project.
Boy, you know me so well, that was where I was going, so thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next we have before us, add-on, resolution number two. It's been moved and supported. Any... Who supported it?
I support it.
Received support, okay, I'm sorry. It's been moved by Commissioner Winfrey, supported by Commissioner Dr. Brown. Is there any discussion on this item? Commissioner Shoemaker and then Commissioner Fuehle.
Just a question, is this a last-minute plan to go? Is that what it is? We didn't think we wanted to go, and now we do?
It is sort of a last-minute plan, yes. We got late notice, they didn't have budget for this travel. But part of the benefit of going is, is that they'll reduce our cost by 1%, which is about $15,000 savings to the county. So it's... The ROI on the travel is...
Needs to go.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, any additional discussion, Commissioner Fuehle?
For clarification, is $3,000 total or per employee?
Total.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right, motion passes. Now, we have before us the appointments that are before us. What is your pleasure?
Move all the appointments if we could.
Okay, so it's been moved.
Support all of them.
So all appointments have been moved by Commissioner Shoemaker, supported by Commissioner Kuzinow. Is there any discussion on the appointments?
Mr. Chair?
Oh, do we need to do a roll call on appointments? No? Okay, all right. Commissioner Wayhill.
Mr. Chair, thank you. I just want to point out that the Resolution 1166 to appoint Mayor Nate Henry, he's a constituent of mine, the mayor of Schwartz Creek. Have gotten to know him when he was on city council, and now he's still on the council, but he's the mayor. He's a conscientious public servant. I've seen him in action and happy to support it.
All right, is there any additional discussion? Commissioner Shoemaker?
Just if I may, as far as the appointments committee, these are appointments made by the chair. That's why we didn't have the process for application or anything else like that.
Mr. Chairman, the appointment for the MTA is actually made by the MTA, the Michigan Township Association Genesee County chapter. That is their designated seat by the bylaws of the MTA, and they forwarded that name to us.
Then the rest of them?
The rest were recommendations of the chair, correct.
All right, any additional discussion? All right, I'm going to state the appointments just for the public as we do, and it's something that I'll do when commissioners are appointed to represent the board on various boards. Commissioner Charles Winfrey, it's a reappointment for him for Genesee County Land Bank Authority, an appointment for Commissioner Dr. Beverly Brown for Genesee County Land Bank Authority, a reappointment for Commissioner James Avery to the Genesee County Land Bank Authority. There's an approval, a reappointment of Commissioner Dale Wayhill to Genesee County Land Bank Authority, and approval of the appointment of Gary Getzinger to the Genesee County Parks and Recreation Commission. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. It is so ordered. Now, we come to reports of standing committees, but under the chairperson's report, if you will, there is a matter that we need to address, Resolution 2025-1230, decision on whether to grant or deny an appeal for Freedom of Information Act request. I want to defer now to our corporate counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For this one, there was a request for the number of police reports regarding theft or vandalism for cars parked outside Lake Shore Drive in Fenton Township for the past year. My understanding is that the sheriff's office doesn't keep that data, so the sheriff's office needs addresses to look up if there's police reports. 112 addresses were given to the sheriff's office. They were all looked up, no records were found, so the request was denied. That denial was appealed, and as of this morning, I was going to recommend that you deny the appeal because there are no records. But I was given a call this morning by Lieutenant Nicholson, who talked to the detective out at Fenton Township, who remembered a specific incident. And so they looked into it further, and I was told that their system was not able to find any records using the number, address, and the street name of Lake Shore. But they were able to find it using the number, address, and the street name, Lake Shore Drive. So they were able to find one report. There was a string of break-ins to unlocked cars one night. There's a police report that was found. So my recommendation to you would be to deny the appeal in part for the addresses that don't have any reports and grant the appeal in part for the one report that exists and was found.
All right, at this time, I'll... The chair will entertain a motion to accept and approve the recommendation of the corporate counsel. Commissioner Kuzinow, did you move it?
No, I think Winfrey did, didn't you?
I'll move it.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Wayhill, supported by...
I support it.
Okay, supported by Commissioner Kuzinow. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Fuehle?
When you... Whether you grant the denial or the appeal, is it possible to refer them to another agency? Or is that not something you do with the FOIA process?
I would if it was relevant. I know that the sheriff's office has a contract with Fenton Township, so there would be no other...
The only reason I ask that is you could refer them to 911. At least she could FOIA call data through them. At least she would have that call data, maybe not the police.
I can add that to my notification that I give to the requesters tonight. I hadn't even thought about that.
Thank you.
Yes. I have no problem meeting with her. I see, and I was just made aware of this this morning. She's just... Apparently, she wants to have discussions so people will park their vehicles in their garages, and I will send somebody there, or I'll go myself and address this with her. I mean, I don't want to get involved, you know, in the FOIA process. I know that's being handled. But I was just given this information, and I would have called her, but everything was redacted. And I have no problem getting with her and sitting down with her, and if she needs it for her meeting, I would love to sit down with her to help, you know, defer crime. And on the one that was on Lake Shore, we actually did make arrests on that. You know, I would like to be able to talk to her about that, but of course, I would do that, and that's the first. I don't know why this wasn't brought to my attention in the first place, because I would have taken care of it, and it wouldn't have got this far. I apologize.
Let me speak.
Yes.
Yep, so those FOIA requests go to your office? So whoever's... I think you have a FOIA coordinator now who is in charge of all of that FOIA for you, and then maybe that's a good discussion to have with your FOIA coordinator.
Yeah, like I say, this could have been handled and...
We'll certainly, you know, do whatever we can to make sure that...
Yeah, I'm not putting the blame on anybody. I'm putting the blame on me for not getting it sooner to where I could have taken care... Believe me, I'm not, yeah.
We're blaming you, too.
Thank you. And I will take the heat... I will take the heat.
Commissioner Shoemaker?
So, through the chair, to the undershare, you're going to reach out to this individual, take care of this?
Through the chair, yes, sir, I will.
Thank you.
All right. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of accepting the, approving the recommendation of the general counsel indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right. Motion passes. Now, for the sake of time, the chair will entertain a motion to move all items listed under the Finance Committee, if that's okay with you, Commissioner Kuzano.
No, I, I wanted to do that.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Due to the time, I was going to make a motion to consent agenda for my entire committee, unless somebody wants to pull something out to talk about it.
Commissioner Dr. Brown?
Well, Mr. Chair, you skipped over my committee, but...
Oh, did I?
Because I don't have a report.
Oh, sorry.
There's no going back.
I just have, I just want to say.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
I have no report.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm going to come back, I'm going to come back. Okay, Commissioner Kuzano, so it's been moved, all items have been moved, who provided support? Shoemaker, Commissioner Shoemaker supported, all right, seeing no separations, all in favor of approving all of those items indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right. Motion passes. Do you have a report from the Finance Committee?
No, not at this time.
All right. Now, we go to what should have been first, our Community Economic Development Committee, Commissioner Dr. Brown.
I have no report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, next we'll go to our chairperson of our Governmental Operations Committee, Chairman Dale Wayhill. What is going to be your pleasure with all of your items?
How can I not follow my colleague on Finance? I'll move items one through six.
All right.
I support.
Can we remove, can we remove item Resolution 2025-0034, please?
Yeah, so, is it three?
Number three, yeah. 0034. Remove that.
All right. So, items one, two, four, five, and six have been moved and supported. Is there any discussion on either? Seeing no discussion, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right. Motion passes. Now, we have before us item number three, Resolution 2025-0034. What's your pleasure?
So, I'll, I need to move it. I move Resolution 2025-0034, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and WeConnect in an amount not to exceed $28,800 to provide mental health services for Genesee County employees and families. The cost of this agreement will be paid from account listed.
All right. Been moved by Commissioner Wayhill, supported by Commissioner Winfrey. Is there any discussion, Commissioner Shoemaker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to the board for breaking this out, I appreciate it. Through the chair, last week I had some questions I'd asked to be sent, some information on this. I received it at 5:18 last night. For those of us who have jobs the next day, it's kind of tough when you have to be here at 5:30 to review something like that. I did watch the YouTube video, believe it or not, I'm a big YouTube fan, but without knowing what else is really out there, and there are other options, one, I'm not supportive of this, two, this is one of these things that, truthfully, I feel have, should have been brought to us before it even came to the board, that this is what we were thinking of doing, that this is what we should be doing. I believe, at times, and I've been very vocal about this, that it is our job to steer certain things in the county, and we've put Mr. Freeman in charge of actually the administration of it. This is a steering of policy, the same thing with union contracts, that when we're done negotiating, I will have a contract or a conversation on, but I don't want to mess with those negotiations now. That we have a certain responsibility, and our staff has a certain responsibility to bring things to us. This one, in my opinion, I did not have enough time to, I watched, I watched the informational video, the three, four minutes it was, and thank you for sending that, but I don't know what else is out there. You know, I've had residents actually reach out to me and say, well, where's ours? You know, we pay a mental health millage, all this other stuff. So there's a lot of reasons why this, everybody seems like they want to do it, I mean, I'm not going to ask my opponent because I didn't get my information until late, but, you know, a day before, you know, we have to vote on it, just getting the information, I think it's a little late. I think we could have done a better job as a staff to get that to me before 5:18 PM Tuesday night. And I don't think that's too much to ask as a board member of any of you, if you wanted information, especially those of you who are working the next day and we have to be here at 5:30. So, thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you for sending it.
Do you, um, Todd?
Yes, sir.
From the HR department, I don't know if there's a question.
I guess I just need to question, why did it get sent?
No, I asked for it to be sent. No, I'm not asking why it was sent.
No, no, so untimely.
Why it was a little late.
I can, I can answer the question, if you want. Okay. I responded back to WeConnect the night of our last, so one week ago, they were in the process of updating that demo. He sent it, they sent it to me yesterday at 5:06, and I responded and sent it to you. I had it minutes before, I had enough time to review it myself before I forwarded it.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any additional discussion on this? Commissioner Wayhill?
Mr. Chair, I just want to repeat what I had said last week, that in six months' time, I'd love to see some data and analytics about how this service is working, the volume. I realize that, you know, we're, we can't get into what people are describing in terms of their mental health concerns, but at least some information about whether it's being used and how much. The other thing I wanted to mention, and I was listening closely to Commissioner Shoemaker last week, he asked a question about the GHS millage, I believe, and how, and whether it applied to this type of service, and if we had looked into that, and the answer was that the millage language doesn't apply to this kind of thing, but GHS has other programs, which I don't think are millage-funded, or may be funded by other grants. So I think, long-term, it might be worthwhile, given this is their, their sweet spot and their area of expertise, to have a conversation with them about whether they can provide this type of service to county employees. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Shoemaker.
Through the chair to Commissioner Wayhill, I don't think you're going to get, I don't think you're going to get the detail out of this app as far as the numbers you're looking for, after watching the demo and the video. That's one of the things I wasn't pleased with. It's, it's a tally total, it's very pretty well-done, but it's a tally total at the bottom, but it's not breaking, it's logging hits, it's not logging minutes on the site, you know, so it, does that mean every time somebody gets on there, but maybe they use it, maybe they don't? We have none of that data to tell us really what we're going to get from this app. Like I said, there's, there's so many unknowns to me, and that's why, right now, I'm definitely a no, because I don't, I don't think it's going to be able to answer the questions you're asking for, especially after watching the demo, but we, you guys, board's choice what to do, I'm just not in favor of it, because I think we could do more to make sure we're, if we are going to do this, it's taxpayer dollars, to do the best we can with it. And then I had another question, if I may, through the chair. These are general fund dollars, correct?
Yes.
And this wasn't a budgeted expense, or was a budgeted expense?
I don't know if there's budget within that line item, if there was, there was not.
Okay. So, in addition, I know everybody thinks we're doing fantastic and well, and Josh and I have several conversations about his view of where it is, Crystal has her ideas of where we are, I have my idea of where we are. We've got a lot of purchase to be made, just so everybody knows, I just asked Mr. Freeman for a list, he was great, it's just enough to provide of all the vehicles we have. A few years back, we tackled this policy because we have old vehicles, we had Cavaliers in our fleet. This is six years ago when I got on the board, Cavaliers. If you guys remember Cavaliers, that was, you know, started in 1980, went to the 90s, and then we moved to the Cobalt. And since then, you continue to move on. We have tons and tons of old vehicles, and with the cost of vehicles, we're going to be spending millions of dollars on these vehicles. The goal was to circulate through these vehicles faster, so we didn't have the major repairs being done, transmissions and engines being put in over in our service department, and allowing our technicians to move faster and more frequently by replacing the vehicles, plus keeping our employees and our officers in safer newer vehicles constantly. So the goal was eventually to remove them, or replace them every five years, every 125,000 miles, because that's kind of the sweet spot with lending, and anything older than that, or with higher miles than that, you really aren't going to be able to finance at all levels. And what I mean by all levels is, you could have great credit, and you can get anything almost financed, but if you're people who have struggled with any credit, or don't have as much a deposit, or have no credit, those lenders aren't going to generally loan money out on these higher-mileage vehicles, so it makes them worth less. Back to this, the reason, one of the other reasons is, is coming out of the general fund, is we're going to have to pay for all these things, and the last time it was millions of dollars, and this time, vehicles are only up by 28 or 30% right around their increase in cost over the last few years. Those numbers are going to be higher. So, these things, when they come out of the blue, I guess don't fit our total vision for understanding what we're doing as a complete plan for spending, so. And on top of, I have other reasons against this, but just to put it on your radar, another reason that these things should be budgeted before we approve large expenditures like this. Thank you.
Commissioner Kuzano?
Yeah, I just want to suggest to you, Mr. Chair, that this is some of the things that are in our next workshop that we discuss. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Flewelling?
Through you, to the deputy director. I think we discussed this last week, but what is the term of this agreement?
One year.
One year? Okay, thank you.
Sorry, but you had to ask a question, Brian, it got my brain thinking. Is there a renewal in this, like we tend to add in our contract, or is it just one year? Because you guys, I've been down here a long time ago, it's a one-year contract, but there's three years of renewal option. So is it a one-year legitimate contract, or is it a one-year and three years that we can just keep adding on and...
Just one year.
One year, okay, thank you.
All right. Any additional discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Nay.
All right. Motion passes. That brings us to the, do we have any report of the Governmental Operations Committee?
I don't know if it's necessarily from the committee, but I'll mention that I did put in a request for a legal opinion to Corporation Counsel, asking whether any of the executive orders that President Trump has signed since January 20th will affect the county in any way. I believe he's going to be working on that. And then today, I requested to you, the Finance Chair, Mr. Freeman, and Crystal, a list of our federal funding that we get, and what services it funds, how many people are served, unduplicated count, and our federal grants. I'll be going to Washington, like several others of us, tomorrow, and intend to meet with Congresswoman McDonnell Rivett and Senator Slotkin and Peters, and hope to be armed with that data, because I'm growing increasingly concerned that our federal monies are in jeopardy in terms of helping people in this county as they flow through us to provide services. So, that is my report.
Mr. Freeman?
Yep, we hope to have that information to you by end of day tomorrow.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Wayhill. And now we go to our Human Services Committee, Commissioner Winfrey, seeing no items, do you have a report?
No report, thank you.
Thank you so much. Next we have our Public Works Committee, Commissioner Brian Flewelling, chairperson, what is your pleasure?
Entertained a motion for Resolution 2025-1137, approval of a contract between Genesee County and DLZ in an amount not to exceed $398,000 to provide architectural services for the design of Genesee County's Recycle and Education Center. The cost of this agreement will be paid from the following account.
All right. Item has been moved and supported, is there any discussion? Commissioner Shoemaker?
Is there anything in this contract to protect us against the fact if they field provide a service, or in light of certain things we have going on outside of there, that they are accountable for this, and the county will not be accountable for any additional costs incurred by their mistake, or anything otherwise?
One second, please.
Again, this would have gone through legislature, I would have approved it. I reviewed dozens and dozens and dozens of contracts, so this specific one isn't in my memory, but if they breach the contract, there are consequences for breaching contracts, but I don't know if there's a specific clause in here that addresses that specifically.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
The reason I ask this, and some of you weren't here for this, but when I first got down here, we'd remodeled the animal shelter, and someone had forgot to put tops on the kennels. And guess who was responsible when they drew things up for paying that bill? The residents of Genesee County, even though they'd made those mistakes. And we've hired several architects on other projects before, and it tends to be Genesee County and its residents that take the brunt, or the cost of these mistakes, and we pay for them. So I just wanted to make sure in this that those things are in there. Is there, is this time-sensitive? Is it something that we could, we have to do today, or is it something we can have Corporation Counsel find out, and we could put it on the next full board meeting and approve it?
Mr. Chair, if the board passes this tonight, we can look at that question, and send you an email tomorrow, and it won't be signed until that email goes out, and you can see what's going on with it.
So...
Is it time-sensitive? No, we could, you know, build this thing two years from now, but is it time-sensitive? Yes, we'd like to get going on it.
No, I understand that.
Yeah.
My thing is, is, so I vote on it, or we vote on it, and we find language in there that either I don't like, or, example, Commissioner Winfrey doesn't like in there, and was to stop it from moving forward, because we voted yes to approve the contract. So I just have a real problem with approving it, and then if there's something we don't like in there, we don't move forward, because we did approve it. So, for me, I would like to see it before we move forward, and have confidence that Corporation Counsel is fine with the question I've just asked, that we are not, or the residents, should I say, of Genesee County are not responsible for any mistakes made moving forward. This is the dollar amount, this is the dollar amount we will pay, you know, whether they make a mistake or not, Genesee County is going to pay up to $398,000. So, if you guys want to move forward with it, fine, I'll then be a no on this, I'd like to be, vote on this, because I think this is a great project, I think a lot of our staff has worked hard to get this thing moving forward. Derek was very innovative in getting us revenue for this project and how it's funded, so I would like to, but I also don't want to put us in a bad situation as far as the contract.
Commissioner Wayhill, and then Commissioner Flewelling?
I think Brian had his hand up. So, I'm, I'm looking at the contract, because it's in our packet, there is a termination section, termination for cause, 8.1, immediate termination, 8.2, et cetera. There is a paragraph, the second paragraph under 8.1 says, "In addition to any other remedies provided by law or this contract, the contractor shall be responsible for all costs incurred by the county as a result of the contractor's breach and termination, including any costs to obtain substitute performance." It would seem to me that that addresses, seemingly addresses Commissioner Shoemaker's concern, but I'm no attorney.
Thank you. Thank you, if I may. I just looked at the contract, I didn't realize it is our professional services contract template, so we have several provisions built in that protect us for instances like that.
All right, Commissioner, all right, any additional discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? All right. Motion passes. Do you have a report? Is there a report? All right, thank you, Commissioner Fluehle. Okay, that brings us to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business? No, Commissioner Shoemaker?
Well, I guess it would be unfinished if the Board would indulge me real quick. I know it's late. I would like to get to our next workshop schedule. I thought we were going to send out a list of dates on some type of survey thing, and I haven't received anything as far as that goes.
Yeah.
That's where we left things off, but I think it's very important. We had such a good workshop session before. We had a lot of things out there, and there's tons of things on our agenda, but I don't think our staff or we have a direction until we have another workshop.
All right, the, the workshop date, originally we were thinking the 12th, but I'll send something out tomorrow. I'll send a couple of dates out tomorrow, okay? Thank you. Any, are there, so, is there any additional unfinished business? Seeing none, new or miscellaneous business, seeing none. Are there any final comments from any Commissioners before we close out? All right, seeing none. Thank you so much for your patience and your time. You indulged us tonight. This meeting is adjourned at 7:39.